For your citizens, so I'm super excited.
Mayor Martini is also known as one of the most accessible public figures. He's also known for his calm demeanor and down-to-earth style, whether serving on the council, regional boards, or as mayor.
Yeah, I don't think there's any secret. When I first got appointed, I kind of watched some of the other mayors and things, and especially mayors like Tony Armstrong, Bob Koschel, you know, kind of watched what they would do in certain situations. You know, I always noticed that they never got overwhelmed, or ran off at the mouth, or jumped up and down and screaming at people. They would take things very calmly, you know? If there was a bad situation, you'd mull it over, and you want to make sure you get both sides of the story before you start pointing fingers or blaming people. So it's just a matter of being calm, talking to people, and, you know, most of the time, council people are very, very good people, especially our council. They get it, they understand, and they'll do the right thing.
The mayor has left his mark in other ways, too.
And I love, I love his sense of humor and the fact that he just, he's so grounded. So intense situations of things coming before the council, his humor and his laid-back, grounded way of dealing with things just cuts through all the stress and all of the, you know, people getting all upset about things. He grounds, he just brings it down to a different level.
The Nevada League of Cities advocates on behalf of local governments, giving them a unified voice at the state government level.
Our mission is to be an extra set of eyes, ears, and voice for the cities. Yeah, we provide training for the elected and appointed officials. We also advocate on their behalf with both the federal government, the state government, and also the state legislature.
Congratulations to Mayor Gina Martini, the 2016 Public Official of the Year. No city division is relied upon more from other city departments or city employees than the IT, or Information Technology Division. There's perhaps no job description that has changed more over the course of 30 years than for these members of this critical department in the city. New technology has made a city more efficient, and personal information more secure over the years. But in order to use all that technology, it has to be implemented, and integrated, and migrated, and maintained. Meet Steve Davidex, Sparks Information Technology Manager.
I was hired in 1984 as a computer operator for the city of Sparks. Back then, we did backups on tape, and I printed out all the forms, including signing checks and everything, all down here, everything was printed in the computer room. We did everything, from printing paychecks, to accounts payable, to time cards, to every report that anybody needed, because nothing was online. It was all, you did some work online, but most everything was printed out.
Steve has been with the city for more than 30 years, and has seen the city go from a single server to an army of servers today, connected to hundreds of PCs, tablets, and phones.
We had a HP 3000 Series 3 Mini Computer. It was one computer, one computer in general, and it had 21 terminals attached to it. And what you would, a terminal was just like a connection to it without, not like a PC, but you could just type, and it would talk to it back and forth, one character at a time. It was fast, but, you know, that's all we did. We backed up every day, that's what I spent my evenings doing.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee for the city of Sparks, March 15, 2018. For the record, my name is Scott Carey. I'm going to be filling in as the vice chair. I have some big shoes to fill this evening, to be chairing the C I A C meeting, as well as the Planning Commission, after we get done with this, with this agenda. I'd encourage the members of the committee to please help me out this evening, as we get through this agenda pretty as efficiently as possible. If you have a question, or if you have a comment, please direct it my way. I'll make sure that you get called, and we can get through this meeting as efficiently as possible. So with that being said, I'd like to move on to item number two on the agenda. That's the roll call. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll for the committee?
Commissioner Vanderwell, absent. Commissioner Carey.
Present.
Commissioner Brock.
Here.
Commissioner Ewing, absent. Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shabazz.
Present.
Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick.
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Vazquez.
Here.
Thank you very much for that. Appears we do have a quorum. We'll move on to the agenda, onto the agenda. Item number three, this is our first public comment period. This public comment period is for any action item listed on the agenda, or not on the agenda. If any members of the audience would like to make a public comment, they may do so. At this time, we ask that you please say your name and your address for the record, and fill out a comment card afterwards. So at this time, I will open up the public comment period. If any members of the public that wish to make any comments. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, and we'll move on to item number four. That's review and possible approval of the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan for the city of Sparks Impact Fee Service Area, number one. We'll note for the committee's information, this is a public hearing item, and we will be taking consideration of action. Mr. Martini.
Good evening, Vice Chair Carey, and members of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. I'm John Martini, your Community Services Director. We're here tonight to review land use assumptions and capital improvements plan associated with our Impact Fee Service Area, number one. Before the meeting, I had a discussion with Vice Chair. I'm going to present the same PowerPoint presentation that I presented at the study session, so those of you who sat through it, bear with me, but I think the information is good to hear again. Thank you, Mary Lee. There's, um, there's quite a bit of history involved with our Impact Fee Service Area One, and I'm going to walk you back in time to its origins, a time before I was even at the city. In fact, I was just getting out of graduate school. I like to say that our Impact Fee Service Area all began with a plan. The plan was quite an aggressive one. It contemplated the expansion of the city of Sparks, out into what we now know as Spanish Springs. That plan was the North Sparks Sphere of Influence Plan. And I love this picture. This is 1991. That is our portion of Spanish Springs, which staff will, you will hear staff reference as Northeast Sparks now. This, on your map, on the left-hand side, this is Pyramid Highway in 1991. The area to the north, our, the red line that you can see in the drawing is our corporate boundary. I think as of a few years ago, you can see the annexation of the Sonoma Highlands Project is included in that boundary. For the commission's reference, just so you get oriented, this area here is now the Simron Development. In this area is Wingfield Springs. You can see that Vista Boulevard was a dirt road, 1991. To the far right of the photo is Upper Highlands and Highlands. This is now the foothills at Wingfield Springs. As we move back towards the west, the area that you can see was heavily flood-arrigated at that time, was the Pace Ranch, which became Pioneer Meadows. To the north was the Opio Ranch, which has now been entitled as Stone Brook. As we continue further west, this, this area is Kylie North, and then, of course, Kylie South. And then to the far southern boundary, although not all of it was included in the N S S O I at that time, a portion was, is now the Galleria, which, back in the original plan, was called Flores Springs, and interestingly enough, was going to be all residential. But in the early 2000s, we identified as a community development department that our land plan lacked a significant commercial development, just as a historical fact. Interestingly enough, on the, on the photo, uh-oh, I lost, now it's back. This is, the beginning of the vistas was getting started in 1991. Not included in the N S S O I, nor was it ever included in the Impact Fee area. So just some points in time. In 1992, the Sparks City Council approved Resolution 2161, and adopted the Northern Sparks Sphere of Influence Plan. Again, that was an expansion of about 8,000 acres. At, at the time, the council and the folks working at Sparks, and the developers, did contemplate a cost-sharing financing plan, such that we could provide for the major infrastructure to support this large expansion of the city. Back in 92, those elements included sanitary sewer interceptors, all the flood control work that would need to be done, parks and recreation facilities of a regional scale, not the local scale, fire stations, public service facilities. And interestingly enough, back then, it also included roads, because the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County had not adopted a road impact fee yet, so Sparks had adopted one of its own. In 1994, the city council approved Resolution 2270, adopting the Northern Sparks, Northern Sphere of Influence Financing Concept Plan. And then in 1997, and as I researched the difference between these two resolutions, they had better refinement of the necessary infrastructure, and they removed impact fees for roads, because at this time, in 1996, RTC had implemented theirs. So we took it out of ours and put it in theirs. Just a point of other historical reference, in the, at this time, in the early to late 90s, state law did not allow for public facilities, such as fire stations and police stations, and parks, to be included in impact fees. So the system at the time was done by development agreement with each of the developers, that they agreed to pay the fees. In 2001, the legislature amended the language in NRS 278B, and allowed for fire stations and parks to be included. With that advent at the legislature, our council approved Resolution 2729, designating the Sparks Planning Commission as the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. The reason that was done, it's a precursor required by state law, that before you can impose an impact fee, you need a, you need a body to serve as the C I A C. So you're meeting tonight, but it really began in 2001. In 2002, the city council adopted Ordinance 2157, which converted the N S S O I Infrastructure Financing Plan to Impact Fee Service Area, number one, which made the program legal per state law, and the guidelines that are shown in NRS 278B. Inside that law, there is a requirement for the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee to periodically review the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan at least once every three years, and forward recommendations to the city council. Updates to the Impact Fee Service Area were approved by the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee and Sparks City Council in 2005. We were set to do them again in 2008, the recession hit, and there were lots of effects on staff, and that was never brought forward. It was kind of shelved. In 2013, we updated it, and then I was just here a couple of years ago, and we did, it did it as well. Some of you were on the commission at that time. On October 24th of, two years ago now, of 2016, the city council approved Ordinance 2531, annexing 67.4 acres of land, we call it the Highland Ranch Annexation, basically the southwest corner of Highland Ranch Parkway and Pyramid Highway. On October 17th of 2017, Lewis and Roca, acting as agent for the property owner of the Highlands Annexation, made a petition for that property to be included, or to be considered for inclusion in I F S A One. This update provides a review prescribed in state law for consideration of the petition, and includes revision to land use assumptions to include the annexed area. So we were about a year out from doing a three-year update. The cause to do it a year early, if you will, was the annexation. As this commission will remember, as we look at that annexation and the rezoning that has been requested, it, there's a natural connection for concurrency of development to include this in the Impact Fee Service Areas, such that this commission can show that with the zoning that will come with the property, there's a provision to make a fair share contribution to fire stations, sewer, flood control, and regional park What's before you on the figure that's included in, in the report, is the current boundaries of Impact Fee Service Area One. To the west, again, is Pyramid Highway, off to the Upper Highlands, down to Gerp, and then around through the Eratza Ball property, Kylie Southern Development Division. The current Eratza Ball Ranch is included in this, as well as the Galleria, and what was once called Rialto, which is now Walmart. The highlight here is the area to be considered to be added into Impact Fee Service Area One boundary, as if you provide a recommendation to the council for approval, and the city council does in fact approve this update, by, they will need to do it by ordinance, because we are physically changing the boundary and incorporating this property into it. So the 2018 update, as we went through the analysis of land uses, thank you, Mr. Cretton, who's sitting in the, he did most of the work, and that was reviewed by the city engineer, the assistant director, myself, as well as your Development Services Manager, Karen Millby. We take a look at everything inside the boundary. We look at the assumptions we used in the 2016 update. We incorporated changes that typically start through the Planning Commission for changes in zoning, amendments to handbooks. We also do a tally of what's been developed since, so how many building permits were pulled in there. The Highland Ranch Annexation land uses were included in this update. It's basically commercial with an allowance for the purposes of calculating the impact fees. They did want to include 200 multifamily units, as they discussed as we were going through the hearings with them. At the end of the day, as we do the land use analysis, the total number of service units, and again, as I said at the study session, a service unit, for, to get your head around it, a single-family home is a single-service unit. An apartment is a single-service unit when it comes to business park and commercial. The estimate is 10.89 service units per acre. So in land that has not been developed, raw land that is included in the Impact Fee Area that is either commercial or business park, we look at the gross acreage of that land that's included in a handbook or by zoning, and we make that assumption that it's 10.89 per acre. As of, the cutoff date was December 15th of 2017. That's for purposes of establishing how many building permits have been pulled, what's complete. The total service units developed as of that time was 12,529, and the total service unit, therefore remaining for the purposes of impact fee calculations, is 14,012. So here we are, some nearly 30 years later, and we're, we're just under halfway complete with what the plan for the N S S O I was, for the purposes of looking at service units within the Impact Fee Service Area. If we do a comparison of the master plan land use analysis for I F S A, at the study session, I brought up that one of the techniques staff does in the interim updates, is we actually go back in and look at how things actually developed. So if you will, when we have raw land with an entitlement, we initially have to do some assumptions as to density and those kinds of things. As we see development, in this case, it was particularly in Pioneer Meadows and in Kylie North, where we have had activity, we actually took their actual development patterns over the last two years, and use that as the basis of assumptions. So that did change some of the land uses a little bit. And then, as I mentioned in the study session, our GIS group is getting much more refined with the way we're doing mapping. We did see some of the acreages change. It was due to cleanup work inside our database of land use. That did have a slight effect. But in general, we note that there is about 222 single-family service units above what was done in 16. Multifamily, Ian and I spent a bit of time looking at the development pattern of multifamily projects within the area. We noticed that in several cases where we still have some land left to go, we had a bit overestimated it, so we used the densities we're seeing, particularly if you guys remember the Lumina Project in Pioneer Meadows, that was a good example. We used several to try and predict what is likely to come into Kylie, Kylie North in particular, so there was a decrease there. So for the residential portion of our fees, there's a net balance of 96 additional units. Business park has been very, has been a challenge for staff to really analyze, because we haven't had much business park development. We got a little bit in the preserves. Pioneer Meadows had a little bit of business park included in that land use plan, and it became a assisted living facility, so that's not necessarily the business park use we're hoping for, we're looking for more. We'd love some Class A office, Armando and I say, you know, some four and five-story office building someday. But on balances, as we looked at it, the 54 additional service units here was caused by just an acreage increase in, in the two GIS updates that have happened since, where, like I said, we're getting sharper. General commercial did not really change. I think that minus one service unit is probably rounding differences between our two analysis. Public facilities, again, was driven by an acreage difference between the two updates. This property, for those of you who drive by it on Vista every day, as you go north of North Los Altos Parkway, there's an open field off to your left. That was originally going to be Mendive Middle School. It's owned by the school district at this time. That acreage, that 44 units, is due to an acreage adjustment. There were no changes to tourist, commercial, or to lodging. The lodging component is part of the tourist, commercial component, with the assumption that a casino will be built out there at some point. This is the 200 units that will be required. So all in all, we added 105 total service units between these two updates. Undeveloped service units, you can see the calculations here of the 14,226 single-family homes that are included in the analysis. As of December of last year, we had built 8,960. So you can, you can see where our building has been. It has been predominantly on the residential side. The general commercial build-out numbers that you see for developed service units are a scattering of, you know, the Rayleys and Pioneer Meadows, and then, of course, the Galleria project, which was predominantly general commercial. Again, on a basis of development, we are a little less than half-developed on what, you know, the calculated entitlements are. We show, all said and done, let me go to the capital improvements plan and walk you through that. As I showed in the study session, there are four real, there are four elements of the capital improvements plan, first being sanitary sewer. This was actually the first one that was completed. The plan included the northeast interceptor, which serves basically the eastern half of the project. This went in first as a way to sewer the first two developments, which were Wingfield and Simron. Then the northwest interceptor was built, I believe, in about 2007, and that serves the eastern half. So it's important to note that in the Impact Fee Area, the interceptors are included. Those are your big pipes that convey, you know, they're, they act to collect from everywhere and take it down to Tom Wharf. So we've had discussions as a planning commission, this is a regional facility, the impact fees pay for this. As a developer comes in, he's responsible for all the other sewer pipes that are part of the development that then take it to the interceptor. The next element, and probably a really good success story for us here at the city, based on last year's very high precipitation event, these are all of the flood control facilities that were included in the Impact Fee Area to support that development. You'll note to the north, up in unincorporated Washoe County, is the Boneyard Flat Regional Facility. This program did participate in its construction, because, you know, building it had downstream effects on us. It basically reduces the flow coming in at the corner of Eagle Canyon and Lapa Sada and Pyramid Highway. Our contribution was about $2.1 million. The rest of, of the flood control structures, as I said, are shown here. They're called out by reaches. It's an interesting term. That's the methodology, or the naming convention they gave these in, back in 1991. For the most part, they're all built at this point. There are some of the first things we did build, obviously, if you're going to start developing, you've got to have a place for your stormwater to go. We have one major element left, which is on your screen here, known as Reach 9. It will act to take, convey stormwater that, that comes outside of our corporate boundary in, in unincorporated Washoe County, as well as flows from Pioneer Meadows, Stone Brook, and a bit of Kylie North. It's left to be built. We're currently working on the design of that right now. Your city engineer, John Erickson, is working with the developers. It looks like Lennar will be building it on, on, to keep moving east with Pioneer Meadows. The big structure shown in the middle is the Kylie Ranch Regional Detention Facility. That was built previous, prior to establishment of the Impact Fees. It was city-sponsored and city-paid for as a result of the flooding in 1986. The floodwaters came out of, of Spanish Springs and caused quite a bit of flooding in the Bering area, so this structure was in place, and was not included in the Impact Fee Service Our regional trails, another element that I think is a fantastic element in the original plan. Anything in black has been constructed to date. Anything in orange is left to come. The regional trails, as, as the commission knows, they're not our sidewalks, they're the 10-foot-wide regional structures intended to be multi-use paths throughout the area. They are for the enjoyment of the residents. You probably noticed that parks and rec fees are only played, paid by residential developments. And then last, but not least, of course, is, is public facilities, which are, at this time, the only thing included in the Impact Fee Area, are for fire stations. Two, two capital improvements are included in, in the current C I P plan. Of course, an upgraded Fire Station 4, to add another bay onto that. Existing Fire Station, Fire 4 does serve the southern portion of the Impact Fee Area, and then a construction of a brand-new Fire Station, which would be Fire Station 6. Please note on the figure that this location is just estimated at this time. We know it needs to be on that side of the valley, or that side of Impact Fee Service Area One, to be able to serve basically Kylie North, Stone Brook, and everything located on the western boundary. The Fire Chief is currently working on two issues that will affect a future update. He has a consultant onboard to help locate the best location for the fire station, as well as, we are looking at costs to build that fire station. The costs included in the report that was, you know, penned by House Moran that's before you, a lot of those costs are assumptions that were made back in the early 2000s, and we have we have been inflating them with time. But I have a feeling they're still, they may be a bit low. So when we come back to do this update again, I, I think we may see more capital costs coming in for Fire Stations, like anything else. If you just use the CPI, which is what we're allowed to do, it doesn't necessarily always find the inflation that during high-growth periods like we have now, construction costs tend to rise faster than the CPI does. So luckily, the Washoe County has just built two Fire Stations, so we have some current data for us to look at, and I'll be working with the Fire Chief to find out what the future costs will be. As noted in my report, the proposed impact fees that are before you tonight are reduced or, or less than what we had in the last analysis in 2016. The 105 extra units is one of the reasons. So we're dividing the total cost by a higher number. And then, as some of the questions that came up during the study session, Commissioner Shabazz, you asked some. I went back and looked. We had quite a bit of cash come in as, over the last two years, as development activities have been pretty darn good, really. So if you can imagine, you'll notice in the tables in the report, there's, we have all the historical costs, nothing drops out, but as cash comes in, it reduces the future costs. We, we had quite a bit of cash payment into the program in lieu of credits this time. And then additionally, some of the elements in the CIP from 2016 were completed in between. Pioneer Meadows completed a portion of the trail, so that actual number went in. And then there was a fairly good-sized reduction in flood control in that we thought we had more work to do in Reach Four, which is... I'm sure you all know what Reach Four is. Reach Four is the big channel that goes through Stone Brook. Between updates, if you will recall, Stone Brook was just getting started in 2007, 2008, before the recession. They had started to construct this reach. It was not in its final form. The current owner that is now developing Stone Brook finished it. The cost came in a little bit less than we thought, by about a half a million dollars. So that reduced some of the fees in, in flood. That is the best I can find for why the numbers came down. I, I know they seem like a fairly large reduction, but I can tell, I can tell the commission that it really is very simple math. Our capital costs reduced a little bit due to cash payments coming in, and we took some elements out as they were finished, and the numbers came down from what we estimated to actuals, and then we have more units to spread it out over. So that shows the cost. And again, they're inflated by the CPI over the last two years. That number is still pretty low, so they didn't, the capital costs actually came down due to payments in and removal of some projects, or, or going from estimated numbers to final numbers. This update has been reviewed by the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. They unanimously voted to forward it to you, so it has been reviewed by our development group. And the next steps will be, should you approve this tonight? Like I said, our next step will be to bring it forward to the City Council with your recommendation. Because we are changing the boundary, it will have to be done by a first reading and a second reading through an ordinance. This has been publicly noticed per state law. It does have to run in the paper for two consecutive weeks, and it did. And as far as this staff member is concerned, we have followed all the procedures prescribed by state law, and the report before you is ordinary and proper and ready for your consideration. And with that, that's a little bit long-winded, but I am available for questions, should you have any after the public comment.
Thank you, John. Any, any members of the committee have a question? Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Martini, you cleared up the road structure for Zotter real well Tuesday.
Thank you.
The fact that we only have one road left, is that what I understood right?
Yeah, so in the, Mr. Carey serves on the TAC committee. Right now, the only regional road left to be built, and I don't have a good picture necessarily to show, is Lazy Five Parkway on the one side, Wingfield Hills Drive on the other. We need to actually bring those two through Pioneer Meadows across to Kylie North and connect it to Pyramid Highway. That's the last regional element in our plan that is truly regional. There is a chance, I, I will let the commission know as far as the RTC and Commissioner Carey chime in, since I don't sit on the TAC anymore after years, there may be one in Stone Brook. Until RTC analyzes the regional traffic volumes that may see there is a trigger, you've got to have a minimum of 14,000 average daily trips, or basically be a four-lane facility to fall into that impact fee program.
As far as you know, the one that takes off from through Pyramid that, that's left to do now, is that the road that takes off from this off by Rayleigh there?
Yes. So on the far right-hand side on Pyramid Highway, there's a, a street stubbed out or actually partially completed called Lazy Five Parkway. There are Malimos out there. There's that one building out in Kylie North that's been there, I, 10 years now, Armando? Yeah. And then, you know, the road in, by the railies that goes through the roundabout, and it just stops now. Those two will connect, and, and staff's been laughing about it. I'm not sure what we were doing back in the day. We, we knew this was going to be one road, but we have two names. So we're going to have to rename it. I think John Erickson, city engineer Erickson, wants to call it Wingfield Hills Road to Pyramid. And then, of course, if the Snowma Islands project gets going, they need to build the road up to Snowma Islands. That will be called Lazy Five Parkway.
And as a follow-up, if I may.
Sure.
On the trails, what procedure dictates to what goes next on the trails and when that is addressed?
So...
Have you got a rule of thumb that...
We do. As each development comes in, if they are adjacent to a planned regional trail facility, we have typically worked with the developers to have them build it as they're building the subdivisions, or if it's a commercial area and includes one. And then we, we credit them back their cost of construction that they can then use when they come in to pull a building permit. Instead of paying cash for the impact fee, they can use their credits. That's been the method we've worked. It's not perfect. We have some gaps out there. As cash, we're starting to get cash in the program. The credits are slowly being exhausted. As cash comes in, there will be some city-sponsored CIP work. Mr. Case and I are starting to take a look at that now, where we can go in and use the cash from the program to actually finish some of those trails. There's a few gaps out there that we kind of need to fill in to get the connectivity...
That explains the gaps, right? Is that why some's completed and then there's a big gap and another?
Right. So areas where there are gaps, there were just some tweener places that are in the plan that didn't have necessarily predominantly residential development. So the developer built it to the edge of his project. We need to finish one. There's a, there's a classic one off of Sparks Boulevard, right by the commercial area where Dad's is. You can, you can see the trail off the road, but nothing's connecting it to Sparks Boulevard. That's a gap we need to fill.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other committee members?
Mr. Shabazz? I have a, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
You had mentioned the Fire Station that we are looking to build?
Fire Station Six, yes.
Fire Station Six, as well as adding one more garage?
Yeah, so let me bring some clarity to that and some transparency. The, the Fire Chief right now is looking to see if that old plan is still what he wants. In my conversations with him, he's giving strong consideration to building a bigger Fire Station Six, maybe a, I guess it'd be a three-bay station, and, and looking at what that Station Six will serve to the south, moving that money that was planned for four to six. That's some of the work we're going to be doing right now.
So, just to, just to finish up the question, basically what my concern is, is simply where in the pipeline, where in the planning stages? And it sounds like we're kind of really at the planning stages for this.
Yes.
So where in that, where in that planning stage are we? And will that be affected by what we are voting on tonight?
It will not. So what's before you tonight is a, you need to confirm the land use assumptions we're making, and that Fire Station Six is included in the program. I identified there are likely some changes coming. I am concerned that the costs, as they've been inflated up, have not stayed true.
You mentioned that, that's part of...
It, it is a Fire Station that is planned, that is included in the impact fee program on the west side to serve those developments. So, no, it will not affect that planning stage. In general, the Fire Chief needs to get with his consultant, and they will do their analysis. And what it's going to come down to is it better, better located in Kylie North, or probably Stone Brook would be my guess. And, and they'll, they'll do their analysis and figure out where they can respond to the need the best.
Any other committee members? John, I, I had a question. So concerning from our last update in 2016, is it safe to say that we... See if I can find my question here. Is it, were, were we off two years ago? It's kind of my first question.
We, we, we weren't off. Well, okay. Is there some differences in land use calculations due to having better data inside GIS? Yes. Is it, did we have a big bust on the last time? No. I think those changes are fairly small, but they do have an effect whenever you have an acreage change. If your assumption is based on acreage, you get a net change. I, I think as we continue with the program, we continue to get more and more data inside GIS, better data, sharper data, we're going to see some of that variability between updates, Commissioner Carey, but in the big picture, no. We, we weren't wrong.
My follow-up question is, you know, one of the concerns I have is anytime we're doing assumptions with development, it's an exercise. It takes a lot of analysis.
It does.
One concern that I have is, you know, if our assumptions are too aggressive moving out and we're projecting too many service units, and we're not collecting enough fees, if that doesn't happen, we don't have the ability to build what we need in terms of infrastructure out there. So do you think these assumptions are too aggressive or optimistic?
No. In fact, we had... As your impact fee administrator, I have a duty to make sure what you were describing doesn't happen. If we're too aggressive and we collect too much money, it's not a fair program. If we're too liberal, then you're worried. When we're all said and done, there wasn't enough collected to even build it. We took a very middle-of-the-road approach. So a couple of projects that haven't, I mean, they're just getting started. Stone Brook and Kylie are kind of the areas, and then the finish-out at Pioneer. That's why we put the history of what's been done over the last two years in those projects in, into the assumptions and brought it to the middle. Commissioner Carey, for instance, if, if we look at a multifamily use in that handbook at Kylie North, it can have, you know, it's entitled for a density of 12 to 25 units per acre. What we're seeing is, is that things are kind of in the middle. So if I assume 25 units to the acre, we get a lot more units per acre. If I only go 12, then maybe we're not collecting enough. So I think Mr. Crittenden and I did our best to get it right in the middle. I, I would look at this as a moderate, modest, middle analysis, kind of average.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So I think that's the best way to balance that concern. Now, certainly, we could see a change. Maybe development in Kylie North, those big densities will be popular, and that will be what the market wants to bring us. The nice thing about this program is we have to update it every three years. That's the intent of the update, is so that you keep up with the trends of actual development.
Thank you.
I just had one point that I, I need to ask real quick. If we, what triggering events are there in order to revisit this, should it happen within three years?
There are three...
Is it simply rezoning or, or, or changes in zoning, or can we do this at will?
So there are three ways, in my understanding of, of what state law intends. First off, state law says you will update every three years. That's where you catch up with any land use changes the Planning Commission may find appropriate. Two, if you're going to do what we're doing tonight, bring something new in, you've got to redo everything. And three, which is interesting, should you, as a planning commission, also being the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, feel it is time to update even before three years, you can make that request. You can, you have to, you have to state a reason and, and bring it forward basically to staff. And then with an official vote of Planning Commission, or if you wanted to open the CIAC up, you could say, "We feel that there's been a substantial amount of land use change, that our assumptions from the last update are dangerously not valid. Please go forth and reanalyze." Those are the three methods I've seen in state law.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John. Do we have any consultants or anything like that? Is it just you?
So, yeah, I should have probably covered that part. You'll notice the report is actually done by a consulting firm called House Moran. Staff does a chunk of the work, so we, we actually do the land use analysis. We're the best ones to do that because we're doing it every day. Your city engineer, John Erickson, reviews the capital improvements plans and, and costs. We use that as data that we then give to House Moran. They take that data, do all the, they basically do the impact fee calculations. They also backcheck any assumptions that we've had to make and look for errors. And I think it's best that it goes out to a third party for their review, and then comes to you as a recommendation, a professional recommendation, knowing you guys need to know that staff hands them most of the data they use to analyze it. We own the data, so that's why we do it.
Thank you for that. There's no other questions from the committee. I'd like to open up, this is a public hearing item, so take this opportunity to open up a public comment on this, on this matter. If anyone wishes to address this agenda item, they have up to three minutes to do so. We ask that you please state your name and address for the record and fill out a comment form when you're done. So anyone like to public, like to submit any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing on this item, and I'll bring it back to the committee for discussion and possible consideration. I believe from the, from the staff report, it looks like the staff is recommending approval, and there is a suggested motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, or are you, we, should we address you as vice chair, or you?
Mr. Chair for the night.
Mr. Chair for the night?
That's fine. I've been called worse.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to forward a recommendation of approval of the land use assumptions, capital improvement program, and proposed impact fees associated with impact fee service area number one as attached to the staff report to the City Council.
Second?
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Reed. We have a, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Brock. Any discussion or questions on, on the motion from the committee? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to call the vote. We have a motion on the table to approve with the recommendation of staff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is, is passed. Like to move on to item number five on, on our committee agenda. That's a public comment. This is our second and last public comment period for, for the CIAC. Is there any members of the public who'd like to make a comment? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment period, and we'll move on to item number six. That's comments from, from the committee. Any comments from the committee?
Mr. Chair, I have a, a general comment that I appreciate. It's obvious that the staff worked very hard on getting these numbers, and I really appreciate the, the work that the staff did.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Any other commissioner or committee member comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item number seven, and that's adjournment. I'd like to adjourn the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. Switch agenda packets here. Okay, I'll use the, my, my cellphone gavel again. So I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Sparks Planning Commission meeting of March 15th, 2018. Welcome, everybody. For the record, this is Scott Carey. I'm, I'm... I'm serving as the vice chair for this committee or be overseeing the meeting this evening. We'll move on to the agenda to item number two, that's a roll call. Adam Secretary, would you mind to please call the roll?
Commissioner Vanderwell, absent. Commissioner Carey?
Present.
Commissioner Brock?
Here.
Commissioner Fueles, absent. Commissioner Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Shavaz?
Present.
Assistant City Attorney Allison Formick?
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Gonzalez?
Here.
Thank you very much for that. We'll move on to item number three. This is public comment. This is our first public comment period. This is a general public comment period. Any member of the public who wishes to make a general public comment about something on the agenda or off the agenda may do so at this time. You have up to three minutes. Would anyone in the audience like to make a public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period and we'll move on to item number four. That's approval of the agenda. Did any of the commissioners have any questions or additions? Do we have anything from staff?
Nope, we do not.
Okay. If there are no suggestions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to approve the agenda, Ms. Reed.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Peterson to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second to approve the agenda by Commissioner Brock. All those, I'd like to call a vote on the proposed motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved as submitted. And we'll move on to item number five. This is approval of the meeting minutes. I think it's 116 pages of meeting minutes. Very good work by our staff. The verbatim minutes were very interesting to read. I will remind the commission that we are going to verbatim minutes, which I think is helpful. We'll take up the meeting minutes of January 30th, 2018, Planning Commission Study Session. Any commissioners have any suggestions or proposed changes on that one? Any members of the commission like to make a motion concerning those minutes?
Vice Chair Carey, this is Commissioner Brock. I would like to move to approve the January 30th, 2018 Planning Commission Study Session minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Brock. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second on the motion?
All second.
We have a second by Commissioner Peterson to approve the January 30th, 2018 Planning Commission Study Session minutes as submitted. Are there any questions or discussion on the proposed motion? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the meeting minutes are approved. We'll move on to the next item, for item number five, and that's review and possible approval of the minutes of the February 1st, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. It's been over a month since we last met. Any changes to those meetings or suggestions? Those are those meeting minutes? Okay, anybody care to make a motion concerning those meeting minutes?
Vice Chair Carey, Commissioner Brock. I would like to move to approve the minutes of the February 1st, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Brock to approve the minutes as submitted for February 1st. Is there a second on the motion?
All second again.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, we have a second. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 1st as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the meeting minutes are approved. Move on to item number six. This is announcements and committee reports. I'll turn this over to University of Texas graduate Armando Ornalis.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Carey. The only announcements, I'll reiterate that we are looking to have an hour and a half study session for the April 5th meeting on April 3rd. That would begin at, it was noon, I believe, and go through 1:30.
Okay.
Right. And then the, just for fair warning, we should anticipate a lengthy meeting on the 5th. We have a very full agenda. So we will endeavor to provide you some snacks as I can foresee a break at some point. So that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Armando. Any questions from the committee on that one? Okay, I did have a quick committee report I'd like to inform the committee about. As the committee may be aware, I was selected as this commission's representative on the RTC Regional Road Impact Fee Technical Advisory Committee. That's a mouthful, RIFTAC for short. We've had our second meeting in the process. We met on, I believe it was February 22nd. And what we've begun to do is review the proposed land use. It's kind of similar to what we just went through, but we're basically looking at the project list that RTC has come up with in the regional plan update for the regional roads. And basically how it works, there's two geographic areas in the county. They basically have it split north and south. And I-80 is the middle. So Sparks is part of the north area of the impact fee for RTC. Basically, what we're doing is we're analyzing the project list and we're trying to come up with a best guess on the timing for the development as it moves forward. So we can kind of program the impact fees to serve these new regional roads. For Sparks, as we mentioned at the last meeting, was the big item is Lazy 5 Parkway and extending that. Working with the staff, we were able to move that project up into the project list with the new, I think it's called Sky Ranch Middle School being built out there in North Kylie Ranch. You know, that's a big project. And so that's been moved up on the list and we're looking to get that funded. But the next step is what we need to do is determine the amount of fees that are going to go for each unit. And so there's a lot of math, a lot of stuff that has to go on with that. So it's a process, it's going to take a few more months. I'll try to keep the committee updated as possible, but I thought it would be nice to provide just a quick update on how that effort's going, since it kind of tied in with the IFSA stuff we just did the last meeting. That's my committee report. If there's any questions, be happy to answer any. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. For item number seven, that's informational items. Do we have any informational items?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to item number eight. This is a general business item. This is review and possible action on the proposed capital improvement plan, CIP for fiscal years 2019 through 2023 for conformance with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan. This is an action item. I will note that this is not a public hearing, so we'll turn it over to Jonathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As our director, Mr. Martini, pointed out earlier this evening, Nevada revised statutes require that the city prepare a capital improvements plan which conforms with the city's comprehensive plan by identifying the cost that the local government will expect to incur and the sources of revenue that the local government will use to acquire, maintain, operate, and replace capital improvements. For the purposes of summarizing the CIP into staff report form for your review, we've composed a summary of the projects outlined in that report. They include citywide transportation improvements and street rehabilitation, bike path rehabilitation, park turf replacements, restroom additions and replacements, construction of Truth Drive Park, pavers, planters, and lighting in Victorian Square, sidewalk repairs in low to moderate income areas, storm drain and sewer upgrades, as well as emergency vehicle and equipment replacements, city hall space analysis, and parking garage and other redevelopment upgrades. So we've also identified the following goals and policies from the Spark Comprehensive Plan to which the CIP contributes. Among the policies are MG-15 to continue and to implement Victorian Square Redevelopment Plan, policy MG-16 to enhance Victorian Avenue west of the downtown Spark Center, policy C-4, which requires sidewalks for pedestrians on all city street networks within Sparks, and policy CF-19 to foster the placement of infrastructure in utility corridors. Among the goals from the comprehensive plan are CF-1 to maintain, as necessary, upgrade the condition of city-owned facilities and infrastructure while maximizing their utilization. Goal CF-2, revenues permitting, maintain and enhance a level of public services provided to the city residents, visitors, and businesses. Goal CC-1, to ensure that Sparks' fiscal environment, services, and amenities make it a city of choice for residents and businesses. Goal EV-6, to provide the facilities and public services necessary to support a vibrant economy by maintaining fiscal strength. Goal C-3, to facilitate non-motorized travel throughout the community. With that, I'll step aside and let Mr. Kason, our capital projects manager, go through the project in greater detail.
Hold on, John. Were there any questions for Jonathan? Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, capital projects manager for the city of Sparks. Just to start off, essentially, in the packet, you guys were provided the five-year plan. The focus of this focus here is going to be primarily on just fiscal year 19. We've got roughly $24 million worth of projects planned between all the funds within the capital improvement plan. And real quick, just the planning process, of course, it really is a team effort. We work almost year-round, basically coming up with projects, working with maintenance, working with all the different divisions throughout the city, working with different, basically, different consultants, and just ultimately having a lot of conversations, a lot of dialogue, and really trying to be proactive in what we do. And ultimately being good stewards of the community. That's our primary job. And as always, I always like to thank all the staff members and everybody involved in the process of coming up with the CIP because it truly is a long process that takes a lot of time and energy. And we try and do the best job we can on it. And then moving right into basically some items that support the comprehensive plan. This right here, the city of Sparks vision, this is for the comprehensive plan. I know the last time I gave this presentation, there was a couple of questions of, oh, that's not the city of Sparks vision. It's the comprehensive plan vision for the city of Sparks. So it's to be a livable, sustainable, and healthy community. And ultimately, I've got a couple of pictures in here just kind of showing some of the projects that have been done over the past year or two. And whether they're partnership projects like the Pyramid and McCarran Project or just bike path projects that we work on, it's ultimately to create an integrated connectivity with the maintained road network, which includes bike and pedestrian pathways. And then the next one would be a regional system of parks, natural areas, and open space. I've got a picture of the marina, but of course, we've got a lot of beautiful parks throughout the city of Sparks that really make it a nice hometown feel that we can all enjoy our families to go and do lots of different things year-round. And then Victorian Square, of course. Victorian Square functions as a vibrant downtown with living, shopping, restaurants, and commercial. Right now, there's a ton of development going on down there. I know myself, I'm really excited about it to try and get some things going on down there, get some people down there, and ultimately just support all the events that go on down in the Victorian Square area. And right now, we've currently got the Streetscape project that we're doing a test program on there that just got completed in terms of on the, from Pyramid to 10th Street on Victorian Avenue, just to go through and revitalize some of the Streetscape stuff, the pavers, the tree wells, do some painting, some different things going on down there. And then ultimately, the goal, primary goal, is to maintain or as necessary, upgrade the condition of city-owned facilities and infrastructure while maximizing their utilization. I just have in there the North Kentucky Drain project that's hopefully going to be completed here pretty soon, but that's been a great project that hopefully will help us, help minimize flooding in the future. And then now, I'm just going to, I don't have all the funds on here, but just kind of touch on some of the funds within the capital improvement plan. One of them being the transportation fund. We have just under $4.8 million worth of projects planned in there. Just to touch briefly on the PCI index, which is the pavement condition index, very important to, in supporting the pavement management program. We've got different ratings for whether it's rehabilitation, corrective maintenance, or preventative maintenance. And ultimately, we go through every three-year cycle. Basically, every year, we do, we have a consultant that ultimately goes through and rates a third of the city streets and comes up with a PCI index, which we staff inputs into the pavement management program. And that really helps us to steer the funding in the appropriate areas throughout the city of Sparks and to try and be as efficient as possible on the projects that are anticipated for each fiscal year. And I've got the three units that are planned for this coming fiscal year. They're for rehabilitation of the roadways. We've got three units. The whole city of Sparks is broken into five areas. And the unit one, two, and three that we're going to be working on are basically in area one and area two. And then the first one, unit one, with the PCI, average PCI index of 33, which is well under that 50 rating. As I was showing earlier, it's zero to 50 for the rehab. And that's near Lena Juniper Elementary School, near Pyramid and Queen Way. And then we have another project for, which is unit two, for some, an area near Bering Boulevard and Sparks Boulevard, just southeast of Alf Sorensen. Here's Alf Sorensen right here and Reed High. And then lastly, unit three, with an average PCI of 39, just north of Mendive Middle School. And then we've got a preventative maintenance programs that are also very, very important to maintain streets that we have already rehabbed or newer streets in the area or streets that aren't failing, but we want to keep those protected and basically help those to last as long as possible with preventative maintenance, which is basically the slurry seal projects that go on throughout town, throughout the city. We have five areas or three project areas within the city of Sparks that we're working on. And those are called areas as opposed to units, just to differentiate the two different projects. So area two is basically down in, near Mendive Middle School. Area three is near the Shadow Mountain Sports Complex and also just northeast of Vista Boulevard. And then area five is up in Wingfield Springs, near Red Hawk Golf Course. Moving on to Fund 1404, which is the capital projects fund. This is the, one of the most important funds in terms of keeping up with the maintenance of the facilities throughout the city of Sparks. It is, it's 2.5% of the general fund, which really isn't a lot when you look at how many facilities we have throughout the city of Sparks. We have five fire stations, the police department, we have Alf Sorensen, Larry D. Johnson, city hall, among a number of other buildings and facilities in the parks and those areas. And this does support that, those facilities also. So we've got a number of projects planned for this coming fiscal year and just trying to get, hopefully be proactive and stay ahead of some of these items, such as painting and HPAC replacements, carpet replacements, the IT Sustainability Plan, which is for hardware and software replacements throughout the city of Sparks. And then we've got the Parks Fund, Parks Projects Fund, Fund 1402. About $1.3 million planned in this one. This is basically broken into two different areas or two different funds. We've got the primary part of it, which is for maintaining the parks, maintaining, also maintaining some of the facilities at the parks, the bike path rehabilitation stuff, like I showed the picture of that we have $100,000 for every year to try and keep up on the bike paths. And then we have Golden Eagle Regional Park that's broken out so that we can keep that, we can manage that fund and basically keep that park in the best shape that we possibly can with the funding available. This particular fiscal year, we have $450,000 in there to replace the turf on the infills of fields 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Those are the main softball fields around the pinwheel up there at Golden Eagle. And we have revised the asset management plan for those fields from what we had last year. Last year, we were being more aggressive. We've, staff has gone through and really, really looked at everything to try and be more strategic and look at areas of the fields that really, truly need to be replaced versus areas that we can use aggressive maintenance to try and go out there and really essentially fluff the fields, get the rubbers and the infills and everything fluffed up and get those back up and make sure that the fields are safe, they're aesthetically pleasing, and everybody can continue to enjoy them. And this is just a map showing that area that I was talking about that we're going to be focusing on this year. And we've tried to spread, again, with that revised asset management plan, spread the projects out over a longer time period. They will all eventually have to be replaced, but trying to spread it out to seven, eight, nine years instead of five years, four, five years, so that it doesn't take such a big hit to the project. hit to the, to the project, the Parks Project Fund. And then moving on, then we've got the individual funds for basically the Fund fourteen oh six, fourteen oh seven, and fourteen oh eight with the residential construction tax, and I've just shown a map here just to let you know what the delineation is on those different park districts. Here's McCarron Boulevard, right here, and then it transitioned over to Sparks Boulevard. To the west of that is Park District One, to the east of that is basically Park District Two, and then up in essentially what's Wingfield Springs is Park District Three. And so in Park District One, we've got a Burgess Park restroom over on Pyramid. The restroom is just really aging and needing replacement, so we're going to go through and replace that restroom. And then Park District Two, at the Alf Sorensen, at Alf Sorensen, we're going to replace the play structure there for the daycare, and then at Shelley Park, after redoing that park and putting in a much nicer play facility, it's getting a lot more use, and we just feel it's appropriate to put in a restroom in that park also. And then Park District Three, we've actually reallocated Truth Drive Park. We had it in the CIP last year. Construction prices are just really going up at an amazing rate, and so with Silverton Shores, which was also a park we're working on, which is almost done at this point, we're, that one ended up taking some of the funding from Truth Drive Park, and so we looked at construction costs, revised them, and found out that we need to reload that with $700,000 to really, truly do that park right. Victorian Square Room Tax, like we talked about with the Comprehensive Plan, trying to support that area, currently under construction, and basically complete other than just a few small items, is this area that I talked about from Pyramid Way to Tenth Street. And then ultimately, the next planned area is Section Two, which is right in front of the old Bourbon Square building, and we're going to go through and use what we've learned from Section One, revise that slightly, and hopefully make some even better improvements, along with the south side of Victorian that we weren't able to get to with Phase One. And this is just showing during construction of Phase One, the planter areas that we redid, and the pavers, and just a lot of different items down there. And then this is the Section Two, shown in front of the Bourbon Square. These planters are actually all tilted and getting lifted up by the trees and everything, and there's a lot of different sidewalk areas that need to be replaced, so we're going to go through and work on that and hopefully make some great improvements to that area. And then Community Development Block Grant, very important fund that we apply for every year. It's for low to moderate income housing. We have ultimately a five-year plan that we go through and get approved by council that we can, we basically plan out what we're going to do right now. We're currently working, just straddling Prater Way over near just southwest of Sparks High School, and so we've completed just north of Prater Way here between Rock, Rock Boulevard, and, I can't remember what street that is, but basically right over here.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth Street. And then ultimately, just north of there is out to bid currently, and then we're going to be working on this area up here, just to north of that. And then this is just basically a blow-up of it with the streets that I was trying to And then utility projects. I basically compiled this all into one slide, but this is a very important fund that, of course, encompasses the sewer and the storm drain and the effluent, and some of the stuff that was talked about earlier, and there's just under $10 million planned for projects within there, and about 3.8 million of that does include Tom Whorf Projects, which is just the city of Sparks' share of those projects, not the entire amount. So that's basically what it amounts to, about one-third of the total cost that they're going to be working on this coming fiscal year. Then we've got, like I said, various storm sewer and storm drain projects from Stanford Way to East Prater Way with some storm drain improvements, Rockwood Drive, annual curb gutter and sidewalk, that's another one that's important, that really helps support the Comprehensive Plan in terms of trying to improve the sidewalks and make it safer for everybody walking around the city. And then, of course, our effluent, part of that fund in terms of adding a new, or adding a new reuse pump station. This is the, basically, annual curb gutter and sidewalks. This is another one, similar to the CDPG, where we approve basically a five, or get a five-year plan approved, and currently, we are going to be working here near Eighth Street. We have J Street out, currently out to bid, and then, of course, you can see here the future projects that are planned for that money. And then with that, we've got the Motor Vehicle Fund, that, of course, helps us keep up on our fleet, both for public works and for fire apparatus equipment. And then lastly, Building and Safety Enterprise Fund. This is one that typically isn't in the, is not in the CIP, but with the city all space needs study, we were trying to come up with the most effective way of managing the space that we have at City Hall, and for the short term, we're looking at basically remodeling the clerks area, which is up in the, there at the entrance. I've got a little map here just showing, so we're in the legislative building right now. So up there, just across from where the customer service area is, is the clerk's office, remodeling that area, and before we do that, we have to remodel the legislative building on these outer areas and basically accommodate the clerk's office, so they would move over there, and then the building department would move from the customer service area across the hallway to where the clerk's at currently, so that we can still be a one-stop shop. Everybody can come in there, but let them to spread, let them spread out a little bit because it's really, really tight in there. There's a lot of people that go, come in and out of there, and everybody trying to work around each other is difficult, especially with all the development going on. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions from the commission?
I have.
Commissioner Reed.
Can you tell me if there's any, a lot of the, how much maintenance into the parks is actually caused by vandalism? Is that a significant problem?
It is a significant problem, and maintenance staff does the best job they can, and I feel like they do a good job keeping up on it, but I don't know any particular numbers or anything like that. I'd have to, I'd have to find out, but ultimately, it is something that we do our best to keep up on.
Then I also had another remark on, I'm really actually very excited about what's going on on downtown, and with some of the parking garages being converted, and so there's less parking, has there been any discussion about possibly closing Victorian Boulevard or portions of it for just walking?
Not that I'm aware of. Armando might have a little bit more to add to this.
That's not currently under consideration. Well, it's an important east-west connection, you know, parallel to the freeway, and, you know, certainly from a business access perspective, you know, I'm sure we would encounter a lot of concerns about potentially closing Victorian Avenue to vehicular traffic. We are going to be going through the exercise over the next few months and maybe a good part of next year, looking at if the developer currently working downtown, you know, tackles a project that would involve development of the parcels directly on either side of the plaza itself, the north-south plaza that connects the, you know, Victorian Avenue to the theater. There's a north-south street couplet there. We might be looking at how we, what we do with those, and whether they function in the same manner or whether they function in some different manner. But one of the, you know, one of the, one of the principles of, you know, urbanist, you know, development is connectivity and, you know, trying to maintain that grid. So I think it's important that, you know, we do our best to accommodate other modes of travel, but I would say that at this point, it's, that the closure of any of the streets is probably premature, not to say that it may not be warranted down the line, or warrant consideration down the line, but at this juncture, just to be candid, Commissioner, we're not considering that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Any other questions from the commission? Brian, I had one, getting back to sidewalks.
Yes.
Appreciate you bringing the new info about the $650,000 that's included in the utility line item. So that's in addition to the $200,000 that's for, in the replacement?
Yeah, the $200,000 is really in support of the rehab projects. They plan the sidewalk place, replacement along with the rehab projects and miscellaneous projects that need to be done throughout the city on a yearly basis.
So those two are two separate lineups, so it's effectively $850,000 we're investing in new sidewalks?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner.
Mr. Shabazz.
Just had a follow-up on that. You mentioned that we grade our streets, and I assume sidewalks is being a part of that as well. It's done by a consulting agency. How, is there, is there a mechanism that these streets are, do they just ride randomly around the city, or is there a mechanism where we say we're going to look at this specific area at a specific time, or do we utilize resident comment?
No, resident comment is absolutely included in that, but ultimately, the consultant, they basically go, they have it mapped out, so they know what they have to plan on doing every year, and so they go out there during certain time periods and essentially go out, and they have that rating system that I showed you, the zero to fifty, and fifty to seventy, and seventy to hundred in terms of how they rate it, and there is, is a, a system along with that, where whether the road's cracked, or how much cracking there is, and just all these different, different things that go, that are involved in that rating system. So ultimately, they provide that information, that's put in the pavement management program. The Transportation Division, Amber Sosa, she takes calls every single day, pretty much, from people calling in and saying, hey, what about my street type thing, but we have to really be strategic also within that and use that pavement management program to try and, try and centralize those projects. We don't want to necessarily go and do one little street here and one little street there, and it just, it just doesn't make sense in terms of cost-wise, in terms of the bidding the projects out and everything, so we try and pick areas, prioritize as the very best we can and move forward from there.
Thank you, Commissioner Shabazz. Mr. Peterson.
That proposed south wall at the Marina?
Yes.
What's that consist of?
That's the, I don't know if you've seen it, but the wall is really, that rock is really crumbling. It's got squirrels and everything digging in it and everything, so it's basically removing that wall, and we're going to have to basically reconstruct that wall back and...
With the same material?
With, it'll, will be a rockery wall, but we'll use a better material. We have had some areas around the Marina that we just ended up with.
North, some of the, north is going the same way, the north wall.
Yeah, yeah, and that is in future plans to, it's not quite as bad as the south wall, but it is starting to have some problems also, but the south wall is the worst one at this point, where we felt that was the highest in the priority.
Any way you'll beat those squirrels out of there?
Oh, we're looking at different avenues, but...
Yes, I bet.
It's a difficult situation to handle that. They're, they're very aggressive and progressive.
Any other questions from, from the commission? Okay, any, any discussion or comments, or anyone care to make a, make a motion?
I'll take a stand for the motion.
Commissioner Peterson.
I move to find that the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three, in conformance with the Spark Comprehensive Plan, have forwarded a recommendation of approval to the city council.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Brock. Any discussion, comments, or questions concerning the motion from the commission? I'd like to make one, if I may. I appreciate staff's work going into developing this CIP. I think with the limited tools that the city has and local governments have to have revenue to maintain their infrastructure, I think we're doing a good job. It's always kind of a bummer to see that we have to continue to do more with less, but that's a policy issue. I appreciate the staff bringing forth this item for our consideration. I think it's a good exercise, you know, as stewards of the Comprehensive Plan that this commission is, it's important that we, you know, get to kind of see how the policies and goals of that important document, you know, affect the day-to-day operations of the city. It's not just development or new projects that come through. With that being said, I appreciate the information about the sidewalk replacements, and I'm kind of harkening on that because I think it's an important policy goal in terms of our strategic, or our Comprehensive Plan. I think from, from goal C, C three, which is facilitate non-motorized travel throughout the community, I think an $850,000 investment is significant. I'd also like, think it helps support policies C, C nine, and C four. I would, you know, if, obviously, this is going to be a tough matter for the city council to take up. There's a lot of needs and a lot of money, but one thing I, you know, I would maybe throw out there, I am going to support this, but I think $75,000 for safety improvements and keeping that flat, I'd like to, you know, maybe I think, keep that, or increase that a little bit moving forward, and I'd maybe encourage staff or the city council to maybe take a look at that moving forward if more funding becomes available. Safety and transportation's a big deal, and I think that impacts every resident that we have. I just wanted to put those comments on the record and extend my appreciation to staff.
Well, we'll definitely take that into consideration, and one other thing, too, is the CDPG funding, that also is essentially curb gutter and sidewalk also. It's, that's a very important program, too, that goes along with the other funding that we provide outside of that fund.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any other further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I think we all understand the motion. I'll like, open it up for, I'll open up the vote. All those in favor of the proposed motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We have forwarded our recommendation to city council. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to item number nine. This is public comment. This is our, our final public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment at this time? I guess we're going to go over for four tonight. All, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to comments from the commissioners. Any commissioners that wish to make a comment? I'm sorry, I'll just make one, one more. Given that, you know, today's March fifteenth, I wouldn't be doing my job as a planning commissioner if I didn't wish city of Sparks a happy birthday. On March fifteenth, nineteen oh five, the city of Sparks was incorporated. Our city's namesake John Sparks, who was governor at the time, signed that enabling act. I just wanted to wish the city of Sparks a happy one hundred and thirteenth birthday. Any other commissioner, any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, move on to item number eleven, and that's adjournment. I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.